Line was coming from my house.
Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Study Session of June 20th, 2023. Two items on the agenda. The first item of that is discussion regarding proposed Oklahoma Natural Gas franchise. Who is presenting?
Welcome.
Marty.
That's a good thing.
I think we just haven't.
Would you like me to stand up at the front?
If you'll sit down there, then the camera will get you.
Okay.
It's a high-def camera.
Yeah.
This is YouTube fame right here. This outstarts.
Right here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mayor and City Council, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. On behalf of Oklahoma Natural Gas, I would like to take the opportunity to thank you for allowing us time. On the agenda tonight, I'm Marty Euler, and I am our Community Relations and Economic Development Support for Oklahoma. Also have with me Marla Freeman, our State Community Relations Manager. She is really our face of Norman when it comes to the community. Marla spends a lot of time down here and knows a lot of people. And then I also have Destin Frederick with us. Destin is our managing attorney. So Oklahoma Natural Gas appreciates the relationship with the city of Norman. We have about 41,000 customers here in Norman. Our service center is on 625 North Berry, and we have 24, 25 employees that rotate in and out of there every day. So we have a good, good staff here in Norman. And we, as you know, most of our infrastructure is underground. So we are pleased to say that we have a 99% reliability rate. And I think that means an awful lot today, doesn't it? Yeah. So we have had several conversations over the past few months with members of the community, your mayor, your city manager, your city attorney, and we have had discussions about the franchise renewal. The current franchise will expire in March of 2024. It was a 25-year franchise, so it was approved in 1999. Mrs. Walker, I know, has sent some information to you with some notes about the document and the draft franchise, as well as the existing franchise. I would like to go over just a few points before we open it up for questions and give you just kind of a high level from, from our side of what we, how we operate and how the franchise fits into the picture here in Norman. So a franchise is an agreement which defines the rights and responsibilities to use the public ways. It is a fee, and the fee is 4.25% here in Norman, and that is one of the highest in the state that Oklahoma Natural Gas supports. That money is collected on the Oklahoma Natural Gas bill and passed through to the city monthly. And so the franchise agreement will benefit the Norman residents by using that money and the general fund or wherever you choose to put it to support your city government. And it also provides the proper authority to use the public ways. The last 12 months, we have collected and passed through to the city of Norman $1.6 million in franchise fees. So we're proposing an agreement very similar to the existing one that you have, that you had 25 years ago. I know you've been provided that draft. The language has changed a little bit just because that was 25 years ago. The fee will remain the same. We've discussed election dates in September and October. And of course, Oklahoma Natural Gas will pay the election fees and any related cost for publication that might be associated with the franchise election. We have prepared a one-page document. We have a picture of it, and then Marla has brought some hard copies as well. I feel like that document might be useful to you. It's just a lot of high-level details of information about the franchise. We actually sent it electronically over, so if you want to share it with anyone, I think it's just, it's just a good document. If you get asked questions, then you'll be able to, to refer to this. It also includes my phone number and Marla's phone number if anyone wants to call us and visit about it. So it's a privilege for us to serve this community, and we have had a franchise in Norman for over 70 years, and we look forward to having one another 70 or 80 or 90 years. So with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to anyone that might have any questions for any of us about the franchise.
Yeah, go back. What was the fee again, the percentage?
4.25.
And how much has been given back to the city?
1.6 million.
Since when?
In the last 12 months.
I think that was actually going from this last, the last December to January, so we pulled just a 12-month rolling. So about 1.6 million. 4.25 is the highest in the state. And then if you take a look at the franchise, there is a clause in there that's, it doesn't say favor nations, but I refer to it as a favor nations clause. And so over that 25-year period of the current franchise, it adjusts. So if we give some other community a higher franchise rate than what you have here, you can take advantage of that higher rate. And so that's why it is currently 4.25, because over that 25-year period, other communities' franchise fee had increased, and so yours is near that.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I just want to drill down on that last thing that he just said. So we're not the highest in the state because Norman chose to be the highest in the state. We just came along with other, other communities that raised their franchise fee. Is that correct?
You had the favor.
So I will clarify that. You could adjust, there are different ways to, you know, the language in that franchise can be. Some can be that for the term of the franchise, say it's 25 years, which is the max for the state. You could say, we want to be 3%. The majority of what our communities are is at 3% is what our standard fee is. There are some communities, because of the length of the term, that they choose that obviously the biggest part of it is the, the dollars that you get for choosing the public way. So they want some type of way to adjust that over time.
Got you.
We have some communities that have just a, say it's a minor adjustment every five years, like an automatic one goes up 0.05%. And some have this favor nation clause, and there are different types of favor nations clause. So some of them, which I believe Norman's was, I'll take another look at it, where it's automatic. Basically, if we agree to one that's get approved by the voters, in another community, you get to mirror that.
Got you.
There are some to where the community wants it to come back to City Council, because it may be a point in time to where they're not wanting to increase any burden on their community. So even though you have the option, you don't have to accept it.
Right.
So you could change the language to where requires that any increase, you would have the option of to bring back to council. And we do have some communities that have that. And some that we called and said, hey, your favor nation clause is triggered. It can go up, you know, a half percent or whatever that may be. And the cities just said, at this time, we don't want to implore with an increase for one thing or another.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Clarifying. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you very much for the, that was sort of sweet. Just a couple quick. Oh, yes, ma'am.
If, if we decide to have the election on September 12th, as they had discussed, that would put a first reading ordinance, the memo says June 25th. That was actually June 27th, but that would be next Tuesday. So I think we need some feedback on that.
Any objections to that?
That was for an October.
September 12th.
That's first reading?
Yes.
What does the rest of our election calendar look like? What else do we have teed up?
Well, your next presentation is going to be on the bridge bond program, and they are currently proposing the October election. I think that's what council talked about previously. And the only other things that have been even mentioned, not actually solidified or anything, was the things that Councilmember Grant mentioned on the homeless shelter.
Got you. Okay.
There's no elections in December.
Okay. It sounds like we've got room in September then, so.
We're just really like voter fatigue.
That was really wild to ask.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it very much.
Absolute.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Related to that, is, do you want to be the only thing on the ballot? Is that what you were requesting?
No, I think there is actually another election in September. It's a runoff election for the county commissioner's seat.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it's okay that, and you know, if we discuss, I mean, we'd have to discuss something to be put on there by next week, so I don't know, but it's, but we were looking at the September, October timeframe, but.
Yeah. I mean, we would prefer, you know, nothing else on the ballot, but it can't always be that way.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate that.
Great.
Thank you.
We had to discuss a little bit of time between, I understand, if there's another election on another franchise that may be coming up in the near future, next year. There's still a lot of confusion between another utility and our name. It's very close. And we are very different in how we're structured and what we are and how we serve, and so we don't want to get too, be so close in time for a decision. So no message confusion will please.
Okay. Thank you, sir, and ladies. Item number two, continued discussion regarding the bridge bond program and potential election. Election is the word of the night.
Election is the word of the night, and we're all competing for the same date apparently. That's your, that's your call, Council. But thank you, Mayor and Council, for the chance to be here. I think most of you know Joe Hill, our Streets Program Manager. We're going to co-present tonight on the proposed Bridge Maintenance Bond Program, which you have seen before. A lot of other staff work. We have Brandon Brooks in the back of the room, who's done a lot of great work. Also, our newest professional engineer, took his exam recently and passed it.
Oh, great.
So we're very proud of him. Scott Sturz and I have been working on this for at least the 12 years he's been here, and I think I go back about 15 years on the bridge discussion. So we're thrilled to be here with you and thrilled to have a chance to talk about actually getting some money to do bridge repairs and bridge replacements. So we're going to, just to recap here, we were with the CPNT Committee last October, presenting most of this. We've got some updates here. Then we came back to the full Council on Study Session in January of this year with a little bit of a tweaked program, and Council gave us some good direction. So we're gonna, we're gonna reiterate some of that, make sure you're still comfortable with what we talked about in January. We're going to talk about an October election. There's nothing sacred about that, but that's what we talked about in January. And we'll give you some background on, on the, you know, what we've been doing with bridges. But particularly, there's a couple of packages that, that we presented, and Council kind of favored one of those. We want to know if you still favor that. And then this timeline and kind of a plan of action that we'd like to, if you do want to go that route. So a little background about bridges. You hear about this a lot in the national media and even the state media. When I came here as your Public Works Director in 2006, 2007, I became very well aware, as I crossed over the border from Kansas to Oklahoma, that Oklahoma was 49th in the nation in the condition of its bridges. We were almost the worst. Mississippi was 50th, but Oklahoma had terrible, terrible bridge conditions. And not for lack of knowing where the problems were, not for lack of having a, a great staff of engineers at ODOT who knew what to do and how to do it. It was a lack of money for many, many, many years, decades probably. And I, I don't know exactly what happened at the legislative level, but the legislature found money over multiple years. And a year and a half ago, Oklahoma was ranked seventh in the nation in the conditions of its bridges. So we know this can be done. It usually is a matter of money. We have lots of great engineers on our staff, and we'll mention some engineers that have been helping us on a third-party basis. So we know how to do this. We know where the problems are. We just need significant funding to really make that happen. Bridges are very expensive. The other thing you never hear on the news, or I never hear on the news, because I'm always listening for this, is this great news about Oklahoma. Hey, we're seventh in the nation. Look at what, what the great things we're doing with our bridges. They don't mention that we are still 40th in the nation on what they call off-system bridges. Those are the ones owned by cities and counties. And there are thousands of those. We have 80 in Norman. So we have the same problem in Norman, and Oklahoma City is struggling with this. I know they're working on a bridge program. Tulsa's doing the same. We're all struggling with the same problem because we have some serious bridge problems. Norman might actually be ahead of the game, the fact that we're having this discussion with you. So thank you for that. Based on my contact with my colleagues around the state, the Federal Works Director in Oklahoma City is a good friend, and they're, they're still just trying to get a program put together. They've got hundreds of bridges, not, not 80. So we're, we're not any worse off than anyone else in Oklahoma, or probably the Midwest for that matter. So a little bit about your program. We have 80 total bridges in Norman. We have lots of culvert crossings, so there's a definition of bridges. I won't get into the details there, but a bridge tends to be a longer span, a larger structure. And we've got 300 culvert crossings in addition to the 80 bridges. So we're just talking bridges tonight. The Federal Highway Administration established a program many, many years ago that requires all of us, cities and counties and townships, to do an engineering inspection of every bridge every two years. Brilliant federal law, in my view. As a young engineer working for the city of Dodge City, Kansas, I was trained to do bridge inspections because they couldn't afford to hire consultants. So I learned how to do bridge inspections 40-some or 39, 40 years ago. And it's really important to do them every two years and to do them the same way. We'll talk about that here in a minute. So we've been doing that for lots of years here in Norman. We know what we have. The last three cycles, this year, 2021 and 2019, we hired a company called HW Lockner, really good engineering firm out of Oklahoma City, really out of the region. They've got offices all over, and they've done our bridge inspections, done a really good job. And we like having the same firm do it several cycles in a row. That's really helpful, to be consistent. The Council adopted your first budget for bridge maintenance six budget cycles ago. It seems like it would have been sooner, but it was just six cycles ago in 2018, $100,000. We appreciated that. We begged for that, and you all listened to us, and we made good use of that, that money. And Council has consistently increased that allocation. Last year was 750,000. The budget you adopted last week was a million. And we're taking those dollars and we're putting it into, in maintenance of as many bridges that we can that'll really make a difference. Where can we really put the dollars to increase the, the function of that bridge or the condition? Not so much the bridges that are falling apart. That's a whole nother category. So up to date, we will have spent a little over $2 million on bridge maintenance in the last six years, which is great. That's a great start. On the right side of the frame is one of our kind of typical bridges that we're going to be talking about tonight. This is Porter Avenue over Little River, built in 1937. So, you know, it was never anticipated that bridge would last 90 years. That's not the way those engineers back in '37 designed that bridge any more than we do today. This one is called functionally obsolete. You'll hear these terms. These are federal terms. And it's, it's functionally obsolete because it's too narrow. It doesn't meet the federal standards for width. And there's lots of different things that we'll talk about kind of in those categories. So we've been kind of building this program we're going to present tonight around, I think, one of our most successful programs in the city, that is the Street Maintenance Bond Program that started in 2005. Went to the voters with an ad valorem tax increase to do street maintenance in neighborhoods. They approved it by, I think, 52% that year. And then we've gone back three times since then, every five years, and gotten an increase in that appropriation. And every time we've gone back, more voters have voted for it. So 62%, 64, and then I think most recently it was 67. What that tells us is that they like what we're doing. We're telling them exactly what we're going to do with the money. We have a list of streets. We're going to be in this neighborhood next year. We're going to be in that neighborhood in three years. We've delivered on that program. We've come in under budget, and we've done more streets. And every time I go out to talk to audiences each time we've done this, they, they ask those questions, and when the answer is yes, they go back and they seem to approve it. So that's kind of the way we're building this Bridge Maintenance Bond Program, sort of on that model. This is a rating pie chart of our condition. We also do that with streets. So we have a kind of a scale of zero to 100. The higher the number, the better the, the condition of the street. Same is true with bridges. And, and just like the Street Maintenance Bond Program, we're trying to address those with a rating below 70. Something D and F level rating. And so the good news is, the bigger part of this pie is above 70. The green, red, and the blue, navy blue are all in decent condition. We need to be watching them. They'll, they'll still decay over time. We're really just dealing with that smaller portion of the pie, the smaller pieces, which I think comes out to 22% of our bridges that really need attention. So it could be a lot worse. And since 2017, since we've been doing the maintenance, we've elevated the condition of several of our bridges from below 70 to above. So we're really making progress on the basic maintenance. Now we're down to the hard, the hard part. The hard part is major replacement and rehabilitation, which is what we're going to talk about here. If you want data on bridges, we got your data. Because of that, that 40-year FHWA program, we, every one of these white boxes represents one of those 80 bridges, and there is enormous amount of engineering data, condition data, hydraulic data, and so on, on every bridge. We're not going to dwell on that tonight, but if you, if anyone wanted to see it and want to know how we selected these bridges, we've, we've got that data to share with you. A little easier to look at on this map, more of a city map. This is, actually shows the ward boundaries, too. And this is, again, the same map of the 80 bridges with a little bit more of the legend for designation. And what I want to point out here is the little white boxes, there's six of those. It's a four-ton and five-ton. One of the few tools that we have when a bridge becomes structurally deficient or functionally obsolete is to put a sign up that says, okay, if you're greater than five tons, you can't drive over this bridge. Now, you and I know, both know that that's not probably happening. In fact, when we were out on the 60th Avenue Northeast Bridge, right before we closed it, a school bus from Norman Public Schools came right over that bridge. That is a four-ton rated bridge, just to put this into perspective for you.
Let me interrupt you if I may.
I just have one question about the Imhoff Road Bridge. I know, I think this map is, the map is old, so it says that it's structurally deficient, but now, based on the repairs and kind of semi-replacement of like the wing malls and structure, like where does that bridge currently sit?
Great question. I think we're still inspecting, right?
It's up for inspection this year. So right now, we're coming into the end of our two-year cycle. Our last report was in 2021. During their last inspection cycle, because that, I believe that bridge was on an annual inspection, that bridge was skipped over because it was closed at the time and under construction. And so they will be reevaluating that bridge, and we will have that updated information later this year.
Every two years, you update that, so sometimes a little bit of a lag. Great question.
That bridge was one of the reasons that kind of propelled us into this conversation when it came offline, and, you know, we had to put several million.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll talk about that here in a minute. But just to kind of, not to get too far in the weeds here, but just to put into perspective this load rating and why bridges are so important and, and why engineers have to analyze the condition of that bridge. That bridge on 60th Avenue Northeast, that's the one that's currently closed, the only legal load that can pass over that is my pickup truck, that little one right there, three tons. You can't put an ambulance over that. You can't put a school bus. You sure can't put a snowplow or a trash truck or a fire truck on that, on that bridge. And there aren't very many on this map, the six that are load-posted, that you can do some of those. We do have some 20-ton load ratings there, but, but for the most part, when you get to the right side of the picture here, those, those trucks and vehicles cannot go over those bridges legally. And every time that happens, there's another risk that, okay, that might cave in the bridge. And that, that really is true. We don't, we don't enforce it heavy. Obviously, we can't have a police officer out there on these. We try very hard with our public agencies, like Norman Public Schools and others, to make sure they understand where these are. But it's certainly not a very good system. We need to just fix the bridges. That's really the solution, not to put up a sign.
Before you go beyond that map, so what I'm seeing, five-ton load rated, does that assume one five-ton vehicle on that bridge, not multiple?
Yes. One five-ton load.
That's a big difference.
Yes, sir. That's right.
We've seen that problem recently on I-95, was it, out in Pennsylvania?
Philly.
Yep.
Okay, in Philadelphia. And so, I mean, it's amazing. There was something that I saw on the TV, the guy that was interviewed says, I went over there and it felt spongy, but I just hit the gas harder, and I thought, okay, let's not do that.
It wasn't an old bridge either.
Sorry?
That wasn't an old bridge.
No.
Either. Relatively new bridge.
When you have fires underneath them and it changes the car.
Right. And again, these are educated, you know, calculation guesses really from engineers who are, we are notorious for, for being conservative. But this is what that, that biennial inspection does. If they find a bridge like the one on 60th Avenue Northeast, one of the things they come back with is, hey, you really need to loadpost that. And my guess is that's been loadposted downward over decades. It probably started at 20, then it went to 16 and so on. So anyway, that's just the way we operate, and that's one tool that we have to try to get, keep people safe on these bridges. So to Councilor Schuler's point, I, I don't, I don't know that I'm ready to call this a trend, but we've had a rough few years in the bridge world in Norman, and this is what really has us worried, frankly. These could be coincidental, but I've not had this many in this shorter period of time in my career in any of the cities that I've worked in. So we've had four bridge failures since 2016. The first one was on Haven Brook Street. I'm pretty sure Scott will have to remind me. I'm pretty sure that was a Sunday afternoon. I remember getting the call from PD or our staff saying, hey, something just happened on Haven Brook, and it's, it's the one up here on the right corner. Not a heavy-traveled road that's, we're looking at 36 Avenue Northwest. It's Brookhaven Village over there. And this is a, I think this was eight 72-inch corrugated metal pipes carrying Brookhaven Creek flow from the right side to left side. And those corrugated pipes just collapsed under a flash flood condition, and the road went with it. That's about a two-foot vertical drop. So thank God Grandma wasn't driving her little car over there, and, because that would have been a drop into a hole and then out. But fortunately, nobody was hurt. We caught it, closed the road immediately. And in this case, we had no funding, so we dipped into our capital fund, and the city crews, Joe's crew and our stormwater crew, actually rebuilt that bridge over the next four and a half months. We didn't do anything else. We built that bridge, and just to save money. Main Street Bridge, West Main Street, was a different story. That happened in August of 18. Also flash flood that kind of kicked it over. That's the one down here on the right. This is west of 36 also, between 36 and 48. We knew about this one, and, because we've been out there every time it rained, because it too was a culvert structure that needed attention. The voters had approved the replacement. Literally, the contractor was ready to, to go to work the following week, and this one caved in. It was a Tuesday night, because I was going home from the council meeting, and it was actually Councilmember Castleberry who drove up on this bridge and text me and said, we've got a problem, O'Leary. So we closed that one, that night. Thank God nobody drove into that hole. And then the most recent one, or the second most recent one on Imhoff Road, similar kinds of conditions. They tend to get, obviously, these are bridges that have problems, and then there's just one flash flood that sort of kicks it over the, the edge there. And that's what happened on Imhoff during a flash flood event about this time of the year, July of 21. We, we happened to be out there because the project was in our bridge maintenance program, and we're going to do some repair, and went out there with the contractor and saw very different conditions than we'd even seen 30 days before that. So that was a fairly major emergency repair. And then we'll talk about 60th Avenue Northeast here in a minute. I'm going to hand off to Joe.
All right. Joseph Hill, Streets Program Manager. So again, we are in an inspection cycle right now, so the 23 inspection cycle. Our most recent data came from the 21 inspection cycle. We took all of that information and everything that we had before us at that time, and our goal was to refine the, the program, build a rank order system based off priority and need. We took that to HW Lockner. Again, they've, they've been a great partner throughout all of this. They vetted that priority ranking sheet, agreed with the top 20 that we had identified. And then we went on ahead and had them do a base-level engineering discovery to, to kind of get a baseline of those structures, what the cost could look like going into the future. And from that, we, we started looking at funding opportunities and, and kind of, how do we kick that program off and bring it to life? As a result of that, is, is the, the proposal in front of you this evening. So, this is the preference that we felt council was leaning towards back in January at the study session. This is a five-year, twenty million dollar program. That is five years of construction, twenty million dollars of debt service over the course of five years as well. That includes three bridge replacements and eight major rehabilitations. The table down at the bottom here gives you the idea of what that estimated monthly property tax increase could look like. And then, again, our pictures speak a thousand words through this, throughout this program. This is the reason that we have the Sixtieth Avenue Northeast Bridge over Rock Creek Road closed at this time. The main structural member photograph down there at the bottom, you can, you can put your fist through that hole.
Yes, sir. Real quickly, just refreshing my memory, we did talk about a ten-year, a larger program, we decided on this smaller, kind of as the inaugural, the launch of this program in hopes it would have a better chance of succeeding and a vote.
Yes, and we'll, we'll rehash the, the ten-year, we were going to touch on that and just kind of refresh on what that program looked like here in a couple of slides. But this one was kind of leaned to, very similar to the street maintenance bond program in concept that, again, we set the locations, we tell people what we're going to do, when we're going to do it, we deliver on that and then we can go back and, and show them a new program and what we're going to deliver on again.
But if I may, Joe and Councilmember, get these numbers in your head, these are, we'll be comparing these to the other one and again, nothing sacred about either of these, you can, you can divide it up however you want to, but these are ad valorem, monthly property tax increases, if you do this five-year, twenty million dollar, five-year of debt financing. And I've really been scratching my head, to be honest with you, I went down the hall to see Francisco earlier today because it just didn't still make sense to me, but I think what I understand is, this is patterned after the street maintenance bond program, five years of ad valorem taxes and retiring the bonds in five years. The ten-year, I think, is a ten-year duration of projects, but of debt financed over twenty years. So, you're going to see a very different set of numbers and maybe numbers that voters might find more palatable. If you told my neighbor that he was going to have to pay a hundred and twenty dollars a year for this program, I wonder what his reaction would be, he's a retired Air Force Colonel and, and I know he's watching his, his, you know, his dollars and cents. And so, that's a pretty big increase, ten dollars a month for a three hundred thousand dollar home, for, just for this program. I don't know that we've had one quite that high in Norman for streets or bridges. So, just think about that as we go into this.
If I may, I would just remind council that that five-year maturity came out of a previous discussion that council had, where we were discussing five-year or twenty-year maturities. Again, conceptually, we usually try to match the useful life of the project with the maturity of the bond.
Yeah.
But where the discussion was about the five-year street maintenance program, where, you know, we repaved a street that has a five or ten-year useful life, this is a bridge that has a twenty or thirty-year useful life. So, you might want to consider that to be a twenty-year maturity, which would have a lower tax levy.
However, I think, if I'm remembering the discussion with council in January, the goal was to go back to the voters in five years and do a second version of this election, to do the remaining bridges that still need to be done. And I think what we talked about was our voters are very favorable to a no-new-tax
Exactly.
offering, which is what the street maintenance bond program has been. If you are on a twenty-year debt financing cycle, you can't say that.
Right.
It'll be, it'll be new taxes.
Yeah.
So, that's an important decision for you all to make. That, that is a very important thing, voters love the no-new-tax proposals here in Norman. I don't think we've lost one since I've been on staff. But I think that's why you all were leaning, and we use the term renewable here, to try to remind ourselves.
I mean, that's exactly how I remember it as well.
Okay.
And I mean, even further to that point, not paying huge interest payments, you know, financing it out over twenty years, just paying for it upfront in the five years, I think that's fiscally responsible.
Very good.
Well, I think another, to that point too, is, you know, as we know what's happened just over the last several years with increased cost, I'm concerned, I know that it's a ten-year build cycle if we're doing, you know, the twenty-year debt financing, but like, what's going to change over that ten years, like five years is a shorter window to like potentially get the numbers right?
Yep.
I know, yeah, I, I already looked ahead on the slides to see the difference in monthly increase and, so, yeah, I think we're just going to have to be really strategic about the way, if, you know, this is the one that we decide as, you know, a council on why?
Yeah.
Why are we making this decision over the, the longer-term financing?
And that's why we're here. We've not decided anything, we've not packaged up anything, these are just two ideas that we've been kicking around.
All right, so we'll move into the map for this five-year proposal. You will notice that most of the, or all of the replacements are in rural eastern Norman. The reality is that most of the bridges in rural east Norman were built prior to even being annexed into the city, they're old county bridges and they're the ones that need it. But as you can see from this map, this really is a citywide program, it touches every, every ward to some degree and, yeah.
So, I, I have a question about that. I see there are, I'm not complaining, but there are four bridges in Ward Two, but if we go back to the other map that's talking about like their, where they rank in terms of like deficient, non-deficient, what, there are, most of those bridges are highlighted green, so can you explain why those are on the list? Not the Twenty-Fourth Avenue one, but the other, the other ones look to be non-deficient or is it just there's updated information that we don't have on a map?
It's all about the rating and where they fell in our program.
Right.
And so, those bridges are bridges that, they may not be structurally deficient, but they are at risk.
Okay.
And that's where that major maintenance, they have major components like, get a little technical here, but not overly technical, a bearing plate. A bearing plate is what the structure of the bridge sits on, it's the substructure and the superstructure coming together. That's not easy maintenance, because you essentially have to lift a portion of that deck to, to do those repairs. So, that's why some of those has landed on there. Another one on this list, I want to say it is Iowa Street, if memory serves me correct, the whole deck needs to be replaced, over the top. The concrete's just bad, the structure itself can be salvaged, but the whole deck is in need of just a full replacement.
Is that the one right there in front of Cleveland Elementary School?
On Murple Creek?
Murple Creek?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I just, just as we think about like using these two maps, people are going to see green dots and think, we're good. And then, all of these other yellow, orange, red dots and why are those not being touched? Like, I think we have to have an answer for
Good.
Why that is.
You bet.
Like, I'm not complaining, Ward Two is getting, you know, lots of love, but I, yeah, I think we need to just be able to
Great point. That's a, that's a
Educate people on, on why.
Quick example of a replacement versus a rehabilitation. Again, another example of Main Street Bridge over here on the left side, that was originally corrugated metal pipe bridge, multiple cells, I, I don't, I wasn't here at that time. But that had to be completely removed with a whole new structure, improvements up and downstream to the tune of about five million dollars. Rehabilitation is the Imhoff Road Bridge. That main structure is fifty years old, but it was in good enough condition that we were able to salvage the main structure and tie on end sections to both the upstream and downstream side with new concrete wing walls and concrete aprons to protect that from the erosion.
At about two million dollars, so that's probably average to above average for rehabilitation.
So, again, to just revisit and, and reference the ten-year proposal that we had, so the ten-year, fifty million dollar program covered ten locations for replacement and nine locations for major rehabilitation and maintenance. And as you can see, the estimated property tax increase is quite different. This is a map of that program as well. All of the major rehabilitations still exist in this map, but the density of replacements gets substantially larger.
Councilmember Tortorella?
Is this an updated slide deck you have? Because I don't see this in our
Yes, we did, yes, we threw this in this morning, we meant to put it in in the original, so sorry about that.
All right. Could you update the slide for us this afternoon?
Consider it done.
Thank you.
You bet. And this, I would say this is, this was our main proposal for sort of getting caught up on our bridges, not that this would cover everything, but if we did all nineteen of these structures, there are not any other replacements or major rehabs currently on, on the, in the pipeline, if you will. So, this was, this ten-year package was something we would build in ten years, roughly two structures a year, and, and you would be mostly caught up, that's not to say that we won't have some issues in those ten years, the other ones are getting older too, but this was sort of the, the whole enchilada and the other one was kind of half of that, two times two. So, that's kind of how we got to these two packages.
One election.
One election, that's correct. Certainly, you could renew it, but, but the assumption was this would, this would be the, the one big funding mechanism for bridges and then from then on, it's more basic maintenance grants. Should have mentioned too, we're still pursuing every grant application we can find, but there just isn't a lot of grant money for municipalities, just, that's just the way it is. Councilmember?
Brenda, if we did this in October, when would first reading need to be?
It would be June twenty-seventh, no, excuse me, July the twenty-fifth.
Okay. And what day in October?
October the tenth.
Tenth.
So, your second reading would be August eighth and then our notice to the election board would be August tenth.
Councilmember Pika?
Obviously, the list here for the ten-year program is a lot more impressive. Do you think you could achieve the same level of impact with two five-year programs? Or are we, are we gaining, losing efficiencies by, you know, doing it that way? Is it, you know, do you, we're getting more bang for our buck trying to bake it all into one package? I'm just really trying to understand how the nuance on
Great question, those are exactly the questions we've been kicking around and Joe's got a slide that talks about the schedule for the smaller of the two. We think we can, we think we can deliver on that, but it's a, it's a heavy lift.
Yeah.
I guess my concern frankly is, will we get the second election?
Right.
Will the first one and the other one be approved? If not, then we're stuck.
Right.
And then, two, in the bridge, bridges are such a challenging thing to design and build and rehab, if we can get that thing rolling for ten continuous years instead of having to stop in the middle, I see value in that, because we'd have to stop, go back to another election and start over again, whereas if you laid out ten years of work, two bridges a year, we'd have the engineers and the contractors just rolling through it. So, just a couple of thoughts.
Well, so, I guess, I think I understand what I'm, what I'm hearing is you would prefer the ten-year option?
I, I like the success of our street maintenance bond program, I'm really proud of it, Joe's team has done a wonderful job and it, it's, it's a proven model, but it does have some challenges when you try to apply the bridge
Sure, sure.
Program to that.
I think Mr. Francisco makes a great point about these are longer lifespan projects and so that, I mean, it's justified, I just, you know, I think we talked about this back in January, we were just so keen on getting this passed. Like, we know that this is such a critical thing that, you know, we get one swing at it and we better make sure that we hit the ball when we, when we take that swing, so.
That was the major issue of why we chose the five-year plan.
That's exactly why, because we thought
I'm going back to the notes in my head, but, you know, with an election every month this year, do we want to take the chance of putting a ten-year bond and people getting pissed off in October and saying, "Hey, we're not going to do this." So, I think, well, we're going to look at the price tag
Right.
and the frequency of elections. And so, we can just, I think personally, if we stick with the five-year plan and the lesser amount, I think it has a higher probability of passing.
I think the five-year costs more.
Per month, on the ad valorem taxes, shorter term on the, on the debt financing. So, the, the per-month impact to property owners here was less than the ten-year program because we can do debt financing over twenty years. That's really the difference. Maybe we didn't discuss that in great length in January, but that's, that's sort of what hit me this week, frankly.
Well, I think the nuance of that needs to be explained to the voters, because just like Councilmember Schuler said, you know, twenty years out, dollar, today is not worth a dollar, twenty years out, so just the, the five-year is a much more manageable window to, you know, make sure we hit our targets budget-wise and everything. So, I, I definitely see the, the value and benefit for both approaches and I'm not really sure which one. It's kind of always asking what your preference was.
And I, I think we've got some time, we'll, we'll get to that here in a minute, but we'd like to go out for a survey of our citizens and get some feedback on those kinds of things.
Okay, okay, good.
I like this idea, yeah.
Sorry, you mean to derail that?
No, it's okay. I guess, I don't know if it's really a question, it's just more a statement, I was doing the, the cost to our property owners over the course of each potential, you know, program that we choose. And so, at five years, at a hundred K, two hundred and three dollars and four cents is the amount that you'll pay. But if we do the ten-year at that same rate, it's five eighty-five, but that's over a twenty-year period. So, you're looking at four twenty-five and forty cents at the two, two hundred thousand dollar mark for the five-year, a thousand two hundred and twenty-four for the twenty-year, and then a three hundred thousand dollar, six hundred and forty-eight dollars over five years or eighteen sixty. So, I mean, it's, I think it's a hard conversation that we're having about like, yes, the twenty year is going to cost you more, but it's going to cost you less, but you're saddled with it for twenty years, as opposed to five. And, I mean, I, I think the question too then comes, you know, what other bridges are going to be coming offline in, you know, a twenty-year cycle? I, I think there's a, I mean, I, I think I can talk at both of these, but like a five-year maybe makes us a little bit more nimble when we think about as bridges come offline or, you know, need to have maintenance that we can re-rank, where they need to go on the list. Yeah, I, I think that it's, we still don't also know what money potentially might be coming our way for, from infrastructure bill, like that package. So, like, yeah, I'm like, I don't know where this falls and I think having a survey of our residents is going to be really key to kind of understanding where they're at and kind of the nuances of all, all the questions that we're wrestling with.
Councilmember Holman, did you have?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think probably November would be a better time for us to do it, give some space in between elections and more time for us to maybe get some more feedback potentially about five or ten-year
Yeah.
program. Because I do see the benefit in both, being able to, I think it's a pretty good selling point to say we're going to do, we're going to fix all of the current deficient bridges and the monthly cost is cheaper, but longer, but cheaper.
Yeah, it still takes time.
Right, so, we'll do it all and your monthly cost is cheaper, or we'll do some of them, your monthly cost will be more, but it'll be a shorter time, so, I don't know, I'd probably maybe lean more towards the longer one that does more, but.
I have two, Councilmember Tortorella?
I like the survey, so when you ask these questions here, you're going to show both sides, the financial side, because, you know, I like the five-year because, and this is a question for Anthony, I do like the five-year because we don't know inflation, what the cost of goods are going to be. So, we do a twenty-year plan for Anthony, what happens to inflation if, if price labor materials rise in this twenty-year period? Do we reissue the bond? Do we take money from the general fund?
You would bid the projects now, that's the beauty of issuing bonds.
Right.
But the risk of inflation, the time from which you issue the bonds and bid the projects is not that great, it's six months, it's nine months, it's not that long.
All right.
But the risk, see, I think you're thinking about twenty years hence
Right.
when you would do a whole other program. And the risk is great, who knows what they have. Just, you know, I don't want to advocate for either program, I just want you to understand what
We, we need to know the, the pros and cons, especially the cost part of a longer bond.
I would argue for the five-year program, but, you know, just from the standpoint of hiring, of having a higher tax levy to, to build from is a great deal, that's what's nice about the revolving street maintenance program, it's just a question of would it revolve?
And this is exactly what you said back in January, which is what led us to the five-year versus the other plan.
And, and we had the discussion
You had the same conversation?
Of the inverted, of the inverted yield curve
Yep.
I mean, I do believe that both Mr. Francisco and Mr. O'Leary would agree that it will not be cheaper than it is now. Cost, if we stay
Cost, if we stayed flat, that would be a huge win, but I think we would all recognize it's just, the longer we wait, the bigger the bill's going to get.
Councilman?
I kind of lean more towards the 10-year plan, and on the same vein of inflation, say in five years we finish and we want to rebid, instead of your $300,000, it's $10, it's now like $20-something. So even the cost per month, and I think it is an easier pill to swallow for the public to have a lower monthly, to see that, and it's long-term, and it's going to capture so much more. I think that would be the preferred and better. But again, I champion the idea of a survey. Let's get public input and see what they think. So, I don't know, I kind of lean toward the
So, Mr. Francisco, could it be structured in a way that it's a 10-year levy, the work's done in five, and we see great success and we hear really good feedback, to be able to do the next question and kind of refinance that remaining five years into the second question?
You wouldn't be, you probably wouldn't be able to make the argument of no tax increase there, but yes, you could serve a lot for another vote.
And our street maintenance always comes under. So here's hope.
Thank you for that, and that's really the key here. We've got to deliver on this program, we've got to deliver every one of these projects, whether it's five or 10, and we've got to deliver them under budget. That's, that's the, what I think has resonated with the street maintenance bond program.
Guidance for, yes, ma'am?
Another, I guess, comment. We've talked a lot about how this program is not just about bridges. A lot of it is also about stormwater, which we don't currently have a mechanism to provide. I mean, that's what happened with the, you know, Imhoff Bridge. A lot of these are bridge, or, sorry, river or creek water crossings, which are being impacted because of the way that they're structured and because of our stormwater influx during certain times of the year. So I'd be interested to, like, how do we, A, get that message across, and do people understand? So maybe that's some kind of survey question, like, this isn't just bridges, like, this also has an impact to our stormwater system as well.
Appreciate that.
So this is the proposed construction schedule based off of the five-year designation here, assuming an October vote and an issuance of bonds in early 2024. So this takes into account our design process, bid process, utility relocations right-of-way, environmental review and permitting. Those are the primary factors that kind of went into this one. These are calendar year right now, so for reference, the goal, obviously, the number one item on our list is to get 60th Avenue Northeast replaced and reopened. That bridge has been out since December 1st, so, and we're halfway through the design right now, maybe a little farther along than that, and things are going well, but we really want to get that one reopened.
Yeah, Ward Five wants to see it open, but their Hansmires enjoy their quiet, their quiet street.
We did hear at coffee with council this morning from a former council member and resident out near that 60th Avenue bridge crossing who said, he voted yes, so he's already on board with getting that bridge restored as quickly as possible.
It's very unusual to close a bridge indefinitely. I don't think I've ever done that in my career. We usually have another source of funding, so that's kind of the poster child for what we need to do here in some
On our section alone.
And it happens, though. It's, this is not a rare occasion. It may be rare here in Norman, but bridges do get closed with no, no end in sight on a regular occasion throughout the United States.
How much it costs?
Um, back to the H.W. Lochner report and kind of how we got here. So again, we took the H.W. Lochner as our baseline. We added some assumptions, and then we added additional contingency. I appreciate everyone's understanding that forecasting, especially in today's environment, can be a little challenging. And so we've, we've tried to put enough contingency in here to give us plenty of comfort with this program over the course of five years. Another reminder here is this program is a fully funded program, so no reliance upon a federal match, assuming this road or that road. We will always pursue grant funding, and we're great at it, but there's just not a lot in the way of bridge-focused programs right now. And when there are, they are extremely competitive. That being said, in the event that we did get a grant some sort for one of these bridges and had cost savings, that gives us an opportunity to just continue on down that list, maybe add a location and complete that improvement as well. And so we'll hand it back over to Sean here.
So, again, this was all predicated on our discussion in January about an October election, nothing sacred about that, but if you did that, as Brenda said, that would be first reading of the ballot ordinance on July 25th, so we're a little over 30 days out. It always comes way faster than I think it should, but a lot of advanced requirements here on election ballot ordinances. Second reading on August 8th, notice to the election board August 10th, and then that information campaign, just like the one you just went through with the water rate election, would go on over two, two and a half months, give or take, August to October, so you could advance that to a November date or whatever you'd like. Right now, on the calendar, I think we got this right, your options in the next few months would be November 14th, February 13th of '24, or April 2nd of '24. So those are the next few options that you have if you choose something different. And I wanted to finish by saying that city manager allowed us a month or so ago to enter into a contract with a company called Gooden Group. They're a public information surveying group that has worked with the city on other programs. They're a really great, great group to work with. So we are already under contract with them to go forward with a survey. We've got some tentative questions we've been working on with Tiffany and her team. That could launch on Monday. If you really wanted to move through this and get ready for that July 25th first reading, we were prepared tonight to get you there with the survey data, go out first to next week, give back some feedback. We might have to alter some of those based upon this feedback, that's why we want to do it this way. And then you would have that survey data prior to that first reading on July. And then, of course, once, if, once we go forward, Gooden will help us, too, to shape our information campaign, do some follow-up surveys, all that sort of thing that might help us to be more successful.
Excellent.
In terms of, I mean, I think doing this, regardless of if we're doing it in October or we're pushing it, I think the sooner, the better, then we can have discussions and conversations around what are people saying, and, you know, it gives us, I guess, better information. But I do think that October, especially because we have had an election every single month of this year so far, I know we'll have, you know, a gap, but then to have a franchise agreement in October, and then, you know, another thing that is going to cost people money on the heels of that, especially when we got the room tax increase, I know that that's not an increase to our citizens, but people see increase in tax. And then our water rate, which we did get this time, I'm concerned about anything that we put on the ballot that is asking people to give more of their money. So even if we can push that to November, I know that pushing it to another calendar year just means that 60th Avenue is, you know, offline for that much longer. I mean, they're, obviously, you're continuing to pursue opportunities and angles to get funds to do that, but I really am concerned about the voter fatigue. We have already heard it this year from our residents. There's another, oh my, there's another election, like, so I think we got lucky so far, so I'm concerned about October.
Maybe there should be a survey question about the votes, the dates, the months. You know, how would you guys feel about what happened this in October?
Okay.
After you've given us, laid out why we need to do it?
Yeah. Can this? Yep.
Because what's the traffic count on that? When, on that bridge, it's zero. What was the traffic count before?
Oh, goodness, 60.
I want to say it's between 1,200 and 1,500 daily.
Oh, really?
About right.
Yeah. Somewhere around that range, I think that's right. Pretty low volume, that's a common
So now they have to go around a section each way to get
Yes. So if you look at it, 60th is the first north-south road that connects from the northern city limits to the southern city limits as you move west from the eastern city limits.
I think it's also fair to mention that, I think that this is really important to Ward Five specifically, and
Got the emails to prove it?
Yeah. Not just 60th, but like, the other, several other load posted bridges that, you know, are in disrepair, and they know about this, there are school buses and, you know, you know, fire trucks and stuff can't get over them. I think that it's really important, we've got the water rate, which doesn't affect predominantly most of Ward Five, but
But they came out 40%.
You know, I think we need to show that we care about the infrastructure in our rural area. So I think, like, I think that's a piece of it, too, is like, hey, we're doing this for, you know, the city part of town, but now we also need to be looking at how are we supporting our rural residents? So I think that coupling these things together also in that frame of mind, I think, is really important, that we do care.
And they understand this. This is why they came out, they voted this time for the water rate increase. I mean, larger percentage than last time, so I want to see this bridge built, this bond pass as quickly as possible, and Alameda, Alameda opens as quickly as possible.
That emergency response.
Joe was paving that road, too.
It's a huge public safety.
Putting asphalt down today. Good. Here, here.
Thank you.
We're sick of Alameda, too.
The only thing I'll say is when it comes to the education point, you made, you said something a minute ago I think is critical, is that we're not relying on any grant funding for any of these projects because we're not going to be saddled with another 36th Avenue. And I, as the person who hears about that project all the time, just please don't do that to the next council member.
So consensus for a survey to go out next week?
Yes.
Yes.
It's very, it's probably not at all possible to make that September general election for the commissioner race, because that is predominantly Ward Five. That commissioner does reside over that area, so they will roll out to vote.
Well, you'd have to go first reading next Tuesday.
Yep. That'd be, that'd be a little rough. She's
Catherine loves it.
Beyond magnificent.
Just had to ask.
She's got it saved and drafted, ready to go.
Good question.
Okay. Appreciate it, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. Anything else from council? All right. Where are you?